All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Vice President Martha Tashnik.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, this meeting sets the agenda for the 1,990th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, April 1st, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I will note that we are missing the Honorable Councilman Rob Donavick, and that is it. We have the six remaining members. I'm going to move right into audience communication for items that are not on the current agenda. We have limited it to 30 minutes, and again, these are just for items that are not. Mr. King, you're approaching?
Thanks. Steve King, 33950, just wanted to finish the state of the city. I ran out of time. If you have a chance, pick up the brochure. Couple of things, when you do, when you're doing graphs and arrows, up arrows are one color and down arrows should be another color because it's kind of difficult to read. All the, all the arrows are the same color. And the only other thing that I just wanted to add that I thought was awkward, I did not know that this report comes out in December and we just saw it till March. So there's photos in here of folks who are no longer serving the city. They were serving the city apparently at the time this was printed, but I just thought in the future, if you're an elected official and you, you've been working for three months and you go to the state of the city and you open up the book, you go, wait, I'm not, I'm not in that picture. Couldn't we, couldn't you just simply add another picture, add another page and put all the, all the current folks that are, that are serving the city? I mean, I just, if I'm sitting in the audience, I was just elected, I, I would have felt a little put out. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. King. Any other audience communication? Seeing none, oh, you made it.
Just a very brief one. I wanted to think in the regular session, Vice President Tashnik mentioned a very special event going on tomorrow at Anastasia and Kate's at Seven and Merriman. And there is a dance party at 3:21, which is also the date, but they are also suggesting you wear your fun and funky socks. And, and some of us in City Hall often wear our fun and funky socks, and I will be, I will be dressed in them as well tomorrow. So for those just watching the study session, not the regular, make sure you come by and join us.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski.
After work, of course.
Yeah? Any further audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to council. Anything from council?
Nope.
Seeing none, we are going to jump right into our study agenda with item number one, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from St. Rafika Catholic Church in the order to hold a cultural festival with music played by a DJ and live bands. This is located at 32765 Linden Street, and this is going to be held on Friday, August 9th, 2024, from 5:00 PM till midnight, Saturday, August 10th, from 1:00 PM till midnight, and Sunday, August 11th, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Do we have a representative? Good evening.
Good evening.
Come on up and tell us a little bit about the, the fun that you are proposing to have.
Hello, my name is Linda Curry, and I am from St. Rafika's church. I am the chairperson of our festival this year. The times that you read off are a little expanded because the band does not play past 11:30 on Saturday night and not past 11 o'clock on Friday night. The reason we do that is because Lebanese people have this habit of lingering to have fun. So just in case it goes on a little bit longer, it will be done by midnight because I do get to go home then. We bake all of our own food. We do have some vendors in the process. We have a raffle, entertainment, there's dancing. It's just bringing out the, the community to have a nice lot of fun.
Awesome. Well, let us-
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Toy.
Thank you. I've been to your festival a couple of times, and it's fantastic, and the food is just awesome. And it's very orderly, they do a great job. I mean, you're right in the middle of that subdivision, and I don't get that many calls about loudness of music or any of the rest. So you've done a fantastic job. I hope you keep up with it, and I'm certainly going to offer an approving for-
Thank you.
-your festival. Thank you for what you do. It's a good diverse group as well. We have a lot of those in our community incidentally, and so this one is really, I mean, it's unbelievable what you do.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Is that on consent?
Yeah, if I may.
All right. Do we have anything further from council? Seeing none, you have an approving on consent. Do we have anything further from the audience regarding this matter? Seeing none. If you want to hang out with us on April 1st, no joke, all joking aside, you can come back, but your matter is all but approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope you guys come out this year.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm going to step aside for number two to avoid the appearance of any professional conflicts. Thank you.
Thank you. We're just going to wait till you get out of here then. So we're going to move on to item number two, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from the Biskilika of St. Mary's in order to host a festival from Thursday, August 15th, 2024, through Sunday, August 18th, 2024, in the rear parking lot at 18100 Merriman Road. Do we have the petitioner? Good evening. Name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about what we got going on.
My name is Wafi Barshini from St. Mary Church, 18100 Merriman, and we're having our third year in a row, the emission festival, and it's going to be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We're just going to have some sims last year, live music, DJ, eastern food, bouncy house, and some vendors.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go to Vice President, and I'll go to Councilman Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions real quick. Are you going to be using a similar amplification system as previous?
Yes, we are. They did a good job last year, so we're going to use the same people.
With the same band, same live music?
Same band, yes.
Okay. And then I know we did the decibel meter last year, is that going to be-
Yes, we are going to be using this, you know, the decibel meter. We hired a company to do some reading, and, and we did, I think, good job last year. We didn't have that many complaint.
And then I guess my final question, most of the complaints we do receive from residents have to do with the bass, not the music, the thumping of the bass. Is there anything we can do with the amplification on that?
We've been trying, and we already improved a little bit, and we will keep improving.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Toy.
Thank you. Good job, Wafi. This is your first time.
Thank you.
You, you assisted the master in the last, how many years? But you guys have done a great job, you really have, and I think you've paid attention to things, and, and the residents were good too. They came out and gave you those helpful suggestions, as my colleague has just pointed out with the decimals and things. So keep it up because, you know, we, we, we welcome all your diversity in what you do and what we learn about another culture through you and Father George that provides all that. You're a great example to our community, and we want to, we want you to stay that way and keep it that way, and the food is wonderful, and I hope you invite us all back because we get to go over there at the very beginning when everything's fresh.
Please.
So make sure you invite us, you know?
You are invited.
I mean, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll offer an approving if the Vice President hasn't done that, right?
I did not, but you-
Okay. That's fine.
Is that on consent or regular?
Whatever the pleasure is of yours.
Regular. Excuse me, sir.
Oh, yeah, we got to do it on the regular.
Excuse me, sir.
That's right.
I don't know who you are. Anything further from council? Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I would just like to commend St. Mary's there. They did an excellent job last year. I went up there just to lay my eyes and my ears on this and just hear what was going on, and I saw the decibel meters, and everybody seemed to be having a great time, and it looks like it's a good community function. And I, I really appreciate them complying with what we had asked, and hopefully you'll just keep the noise down and comply with the decimal meters that we had last year, and I think everything will be fine.
We will.
I appreciate that.
We will.
Thank you for your community function.
For sure. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Morgan. I have just one thing, just, so we did receive a letter from, I think, one resident. The bass is the biggest deal. I know last year you guys did with the decibel meters, it's appreciated. The festival obviously does good things for the community. Watch the bass. I know that the bass, I think we all learn more about decibels and decibel meters and gadgets. Everybody on, that was on council, and you guys as well?
Yes.
Just watch the bass. The bass is what we keep hearing from the residents of rattling windows. I think it has a different sound tune to it that doesn't get picked up on the decibel, so that's my recommendation. You know, again, you guys have been good stewards to the community, just watch the bass.
Thank you. I promise you, we will.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Yes. We're going to try to see how we can keep Mr. Jolly in the audience.
Hi, my name's Jill Robinson, and I live on 30774 Bobridge Street, bit more than a quarter, quarter mile away from the church. And I got to tell you, I've lived here since 1995, and I would say in the last six-plus years, maybe not too many more than that, the, the noise level's been out the roof. Thursday to Sunday is a bit, I don't know, but it doesn't really say here what the time is, that the decibel lover, or the decibel lovers are out the door. For us, it's very disturbing. I hear it with all my windows shut in the summertime with air ignition blasting. So I just want to let you know that something more has to be done than just the bass. Yeah, the bass is one thing, but decibels are another thing. They have not been reduced. So maybe the times can be changed? Don't know, doesn't say here what the time is. I know that the one above says from 1:00 to 12:00 on, and then Sunday from 1:00 to 9:00. So depends on the time of day until the evenings hours. But it is disturbing to probably many of my neighbors, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
But the church is a lovely church.
Thank you.
Mr. Condon, name and address?
Good evening, Paul Condon, 31115 Hillbrook. Our property backs up to St. Mary's, right across the ditch from them. Council's aware some of the members are that have been pretty vocal in the past of being against this, this event, not against the event, but certainly against the disturbance. But I have to say that last year, St. Mary's, because of the council previous to this one, they did what they said they were going to do. They were going to provide decibel meters, and they did. Came over to my house and, which we live right, again, right behind the church, and the decibels, they kept it within the 75 decibel almost all the time. There were a few times it went up, I don't think ever higher than about 85. And when it was 85, it was just for a short period of time, less than probably a minute or two. Again, the bass issue is something that has to be hopefully addressed at some point. I would like to know through the chair, the hours that they're requesting? If we can, if I can get that answer, I'd be curious. Usually that's presented in the agenda, and I don't think it was in the agenda, so I'm not sure what they're doing there. But the main, my main point is that they said they were going to do something, and they actually followed through and did it, somewhat of a rarity these days. So with that being said, I, you know, it was a wonderful event. It was noisy, but I think as part of our community spirit, we need to get behind our local churches and to support them as they would support us in our times of need, and they need to have the funds, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was curious if Ms. Toy would consider amending her motion to include the times?
Certainly.
Yes. Councilman Bezinski.
Do you want me to read the times that were listed in our packet?
Sure.
Okay. So Friday, August 16th, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, August 17th, from 12:00 PM to 11:59 PM, Sunday, August 18th, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
And, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, it also notes the take down on the 19th, the night before Thursday, August 15th, they'll have a soft opening celebration of the dormition.
So what we'll do, if, if it's possible, so this is on the regular, so on April 1st, what we'll do is we'll make sure we have the dates, everything cleaned out, we'll have the decibel meters, I think that's even listed on there. So when we go to our vote, we'll make sure we have all the clarification for April 1st, if that's okay with everybody.
So this won't be on the consent agenda?
It will not be.
Okay. And one other thing, just as another, another positive, they did say that they would end at midnight for 11:59. In previous years, it's gone over. Last year, it was maybe about five minutes to, 10 minutes to. So they actually stopped a few minutes early, so point is they're, I think, trying to be respectful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Anything further from council? Anything further from the audience? Mr. Jolly, you can come back.
And, Mr. President, I'll be taking my leave. I am on the board for the next item, so I will recuse myself.
There you go. All right, so we are going to move on to item number three, which is a request for designation as a nonprofit organization. Is Ms. Stephanie Parker here? I do not want to gut this name, can you, how do I pronounce it? Ahanabashi? Akonabashi, okay. I am really bad at pronunciation, so I asked, you know, Keri told me earlier, so I just didn't want to start off bad on that. So we're looking for designation of a nonprofit organization as required by the state of Michigan to obtain a charitable gaming license to allow raffle fundraisers in the future. Tell us a little about this.
All right, so my name's Stephanie Parker, and I am one of the volunteers and on the board of the Akonabashi Foundation. So this started because, so Niji Iro is a Japanese immersion, two-way immersion school in Livonia that goes through kindergarten through sixth grade. When the school was started, the plan, from what I understand, was to go through high school, but then, I don't know what happened, but eventually parents realized that it was not going to continue beyond sixth grade. So they formed a group to start to look for different opportunities to continue their children's schooling with Japanese and English, you know, bilingual learning. So various plans didn't work out, but what we needed to do to be able to fundraise, to provide some after-school programming for the school, for the kids, is create a nonprofit because the PTA, you can only fundraise for the students in your school, and the, for the program, the kids are at Niji Iro through sixth grade and then tracked to Holmes and then tracked to Stevenson. So for those middle school children where there currently isn't any programming at their skill level outside of private tutors for the children or for the native speakers, their Saturday school. So we performed this organization and started to try to apply for grants and raise money, and our goal is to provide either free or very low-cost after-school programming for the kids, the kids who have come from Niji Iro or any, you know, other children that are just interested in Japanese learning.
That's awesome. Great job, you know, of everything you do on this. Council? Councilman Toy.
Was he first?
I'm not going to-
Don't-
No, you were technically first.
You were first in all things before me.
All things, yeah, okay. Now that, I was just going to offer an approving because what a wonderful organization. I know that Keri and the co-off's family was involved in this many years back. You guys, people have done a fantastic job with that, and again, it brings good diversity into this community, and that's, that's very important. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll just echo what my colleague has said here. I, I live in the neighborhood where Niji Iro is located, and it's, it's, it's really interesting and really cool to see the things that they do that are different compared to my, my children's LPS school, and I think it brings a, a different context to the community, right? And it's one of these things that, you know, not all the students who go to school there are Livonia residents, but it is a draw and an attraction into our community that is recognizable and appreciative. So I think this is a good idea that, you know, you've started this organization as well. I commend you both and anybody else who's involved, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Do we have, we have a motion, correct?
Yes.
Is that consent or regular?
It's got to be regular because-
So you will be on regular on April 1st for the designation of Akonabashi. I get it?
Yeah.
Yes, all right. So if you are free on April 1st, I mean, we do have to take a vote on it, but we'll have the vote done.
Thank you.
I don't think you, you can pick or, but I don't, I don't foresee any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Akonabashi. I got it. All right. Moving on to item number four, which is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement. This comes to us from Chuck McHenry from Floco, Four Clover Realty for four homes to be constructed at 15235, 15251, 15273, and 15287 Fairlane Avenue. Is a petitioner in the audience? Council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Due to the lack of the petitioner being here, I will offer this as an approving for the regular agenda and make note that we would like to have the petitioner present.
Thank you. Mr. McHenry, if you're out there, please make sure to be here on April 1st for your item. Mr. Zalinski.
Just wanted to make sure the council's aware of the letter we wrote to you guys regarding our position on the sidewalks, so we are, we're requesting it to be denied because, again, a lot of people walk in the street, it's corridor up to five mile, but there's four houses that are going to be built there. There is sidewalk on the far south side of the street, but just wanted to make sure the council's aware of it, that this, the engineering department's requiring it denied, but just want to make sure the information was, you know, volged to all the council members so they were aware of that. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Anything further from, oh, Mr. Morgan?
Mr. Zalinski, could you just tell me, I wasn't, I'm having some problems with the computer here, but is there a connecting sidewalk with that, or is there no sidewalks in that area? And we're just going to build, build houses and put a sidewalk where it's a dead-end sidewalk?
So there's four houses that would be built along five-mile road. Again, you have a church across the street, and a lot of people partake in activities in that church, so a lot of people walking down the, the street itself. There's four houses, then there's a gap of sidewalk, and then if you traverse further south in the packet, you'll see that there's several pieces of sidewalk because it used to be the school at the end of Linden. So the goal would be, again, we're trying to do walkable, bikeable community, to have that, at least west side would be connectivity, connectivity along there. If you go to the other side streets in that area, there is connectivity on those Riverside, Gary, you know, those type of streets, whatever. So I recommend that the sidewalks be put in with the houses as approved, like we normally do on all, all the plot plans.
Well, I guess my question, let me just clarify because I, so the homes that they're planning on putting in here, lots one through four, if there was a lot five, would there be any sidewalks there? Or is there a pre-existing house with no sidewalks?
There is existing houses south with no sidewalk, but again, if you go down four or five, six houses, then, then there's additional sidewalk that traverses to the end of Linden. There's like four or five houses near the, if you go from north of Linden, on the west side, there's four or five houses that have sidewalk, then there's a gap of no sidewalk, and then if there was sidewalk constructed with these houses, that would be, the north part would be constructed as part of that, hopefully overall connectivity.
Are we planning on connecting that?
Again, um-
Or is that up to the homeowner to be able to do that?
Again, council has the ability to do special assessments, but again, at least you have one side of the, of the street would have ability for people to walk on the sidewalk in the future than walking down the middle of the street. And again, there's a church that has during timeframes have activities, whatever, but I'm just, this is my recommendation, it's up to city council, again, just wanted to voice the fact there is sidewalk on the south end of that area where the school used to be, and hopefully there would be connectivity in the future in the middle.
Thank you.
Mr. Zalinski, is there a site plan for these four sites? Because I, so I just through, living in the community, I've heard various things in regards to what was potentially going to go there, but are we looking at four, you know, standard home sites?
I believe so. Four, four residential homes that would front along that street there and connect up to five mile. I think there's like, this is an house that was torn down, and then now they want to split it and have four lots, four individual homes put there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anything else from council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, so we do have an approving on regular. Obviously, there'll be more discussion. We are going to now move on to item number five, which is a request to approve contract with Aetna Supply Company, the sole source provider of census meters in Michigan. This comes to us from the Public Works Department for water meters and supplies in the amount not to exceed $1.5 million annually from budgeted funds. Mr. Roraf?
Good evening, Don Roraf, DPW. As you mentioned, we are looking to approve this contract with Aetna. As you're aware, Aetna is the sole supplier in the state of Michigan, as you stated, of our water meter and materials for meter repairs and meter replacements within the city. The, the meter department itself has been doing a great job of changing out meters. We're averaging about 100 to 125 a month, along with changing out the endpoints which send out the signals from the, for meter reading. We're averaging about 800 of those. They've installed at this point about 20,000 endpoints to date, so that's pretty good. It's about half of our city at this point that we've changed out and brought up to speed in regards to that. We have a two-year quote that we are requesting council approve for the purchase of the water meters and supplies from Aetna Supply Company in an amount not to exceed 1.5 million annually at the unit pricing attached with the quote. The funding is available from the budgeted funds in the water and sewer account. Also, we would like you to waive the formal bidding process and the code of ordinance as amended, since no advantage to the city would result in competitive bidding for these meters, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Mr. President?
Councilman Toy.
If I may, Mr. Roraf, this is basically, I mean, I know we're waiving, but this is basically a housekeeping manner because I think we've done this in the past because they are sole source, and because of that reason, I mean, they've done an excellent job through the years. I don't think there's been any problems as long as I've sat here. It seems to be a reoccurring thing.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
We, we are always trying to get a longer contract when we're dealing with this. We obviously want to keep the same meter type and-
Sure.
-upgrade those meters within our system. It has to do with the meter reading system, the software programs, everything that we use, but as every other vendor or business that we deal with, they're, they're less and less willing to extend the contract more than a year or two, so that's why we're looking at two years for this one.
Sure.
But they've done a great job in supplying our stuff for us and helping us out.
Appreciate it. So for that reason, Mr. Chair, I mean, if somebody else wants to offer an approving, I'll be more than happy to hand it off, but it, it probably is an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent? Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Roraf, you have your census meters?
Thank you.
All but assured. We're going to move on to item number six, which is a request for authorization to purchase two 2024 Ford F-150 Supercab XL pickup trucks and two 2024 F-250 Supercab pickup trucks through the state of Michigan and Macomb County bid process. This comes to us from the Public Works Division. Mr. Roraf?
Thank you. Again, I'm before you today, we're looking to purchase four pickup trucks through the state of Michigan and Macomb County bid for the water department use. These will be replacement vehicles with the old ones being disposed of through the public auction process, and I would like to point out that as always, we're, and I mentioned this earlier, we're always looking to right-size our fleet, use equipment that makes sense, multiple use. Historically, we've always come before you without, without question asking for F-250s because of the durability and the things that we're doing. Two of these vehicles, we're going to F-150s for our staking, for missed dig. There's been tons and tons of an increase in that, so instead of going out and purchasing F-250s for these, we're saving about $8,000 per vehicle on, on each of these by going we're saving about $8,000 per vehicle on, on each of these by going down to an F-150. So I just wanted to bring that point up. I know we, we sometimes take, take it for granted that we're just out there and just kinda doing what we've always done. But that's about a $16,000 savings just by changing that up. And again, this is gonna be for the water department. And the department is requesting council approval to purchase two F-150s and two F-250s from Lunghammer Ford, who has the state of Michigan account this year, from budgeted funds in the water and sewer account. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Don, so this is a little off-topic, but you kinda jarred something in my head. Is there ever a conversation or discussion in regards to going back to the buy fuel converters on these trucks? Cause I would be curious now that, you know, that change was made. And what that was for context here is, a lot of these vehicles at some point in the past had converters that would allow them to run on natural gas as well. And it was an additional, I wanna say approximately $6,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. And council, earlier in my career, decided to get rid of that because the cost of fuel at that point had been relatively significantly cheaper than it was when that started. But fuel prices have gone up now again. And we also live in a different circumstance really, where it might be beneficial to have two options for fuel, right? So anyways, is that ever discussed or thought of or is that something we might look at in the future again?
Yeah, absolutely. It's funny that you bring that up and you're referring to our partnership with Roush, where we were coming in and converting some of our pickup trucks, our F-250s, as a matter of fact. And as you stated, everything there is accurate, the price of gas and everything. But we have talked about bringing Roush back to the table and entertaining other companies as well from a buy fuel standpoint. The one thing that we were noticing when we were partnered with them is that we'd have to take the whole fueling system, all the fuel lines, everything off of those vehicles and put their specific, you know, fuel lines and stuff back on there, which the resale value wasn't all that great for those. But we definitely have talked about sitting back down and entertaining the possibility. As you know, we use propane for our Dixie choppers, our mowers, and a bunch of different things. So that is definitely on the table. That is one of the tasks this year that I would, would love to sit down and make happen and at least get the information to know if it's worthwhile.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Do you have a motion?
I'll offer an approving for consent.
Councilman Mizenski?
Yes, well, and since we're talking about, you know, fuel and energy sources, you know, I'd really love to see, looking at electric. You know, that is also a change in how people are getting energy. We have trucks that are purely electric or flex fuel, where can operate mostly on electricity and have gas reserve. So if we're looking and evaluating what is the most efficient, what is most cost savings, I'd love to see electric vehicles explored as well.
Thank you, Councilman Mizenski. Anything else from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, you have an approving on consent, Mr. Roroff?
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. All right, we are gonna move on to item number seven, which is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2024 asphalt road program by extending contract 23-Unit Prices with Nagel Paving Company. This comes to us from the Engineering Division in the amount of $4,233,939.70. Mr. Zalinsik?
Thank you, Council President, council city members. As you know, last year, we went out for bids for the 23A program, in which we had one bid submitted, which was Nagel Paving, in the amount of 3.8 million. This year, again, we're trying to get the most streets done with the best amount of tax dollars from the village that we can get done. We then took the information with OHM to provide the bid proposal, sent it over to Nagel, and they provided a cost with the amount of 4.233 million. This, this year's program includes Hubbard Road, in which we wanna widen the west side of the street for a widened shoulder from Six Mile down to Buchanan. And again, as you know, previously, four or five years ago, we did the east side to make it safe. We have a lot of people like to run or walk or jog along that corridor. And eventually, the goal is to get down to Five Mile at the rec center to have that connectivity from the rec center up to Six Mile Rotary, which has a walking path. So we're getting there slowly, but 4.1 million was budgeted from our road funds. 150,000 was budgeted for the bike walk, non-motorized pass, so a total of 4.25 all-in budgeted. So we're asking for your consideration, waive the formal bidding process, award the bid to Nagel Paving in the amount of $4,233,939.70. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Toy?
Thank you. To Mr. Zalinsik. That's right, right by where I live and I often jog there. Every, every morning. So I just... And I, I see Paul riding his bike that way too, so I just gotta tell you that. I believe in what you're telling us and what we need there because, no, a lot of people do enjoy that. Part of Livonia right there and we, I had five deer in my backyard yesterday, so they were enjoying it too. So I wanna say, Mr. Chair, if we could have an approving on this. Nagel's been doing work for this city for a long time and has done an excellent job. You can't, you can't go wrong with them. So that's my commercial for Nagel and you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Jolly?
Todd, I have a love-hate relationship with this project. And I, not that we're, what's before us today, but I remember how excited I was when the first part of this portion was done on Hubbard Road and how disappointed I was, not in the finished work product, but the actual scenario that it created, which actually created a paved shoulder for Hubbard Road. I have run on that literally hundreds of times and it is one of the scariest places to run in Livonia. I understand that you have certain constraints. And I know we've talked about this during the first portion or the aftermath of the first portion. Is there any possible way that we can do some sort of marking or device or separation between the newly paved portion and the roadway? Because this is, this is an area where, in the fall, this is where the people's leaves go. And anybody, you see, almost every day, you see families pushing strollers, you see young kids riding bikes, trying to make the best of this as part of the Walk-Bike Livonia Plan. All the while, there are cars going faster than they should be on Hubbard Road. And I'll tell you honestly, like, you're, if you, and I know you run too, right? But you're running, you're running constantly with your head over your shoulder and you gotta be ready to move. And I mean, it's just one of these things, and again, I appreciate this. I love it and I hate it at the same time. Is there anything we can do to designate this as pedestrian and not just a shoulderway?
I think the goal would be, once we complete the portion from Buchanan down to Five Mile on the west side, which again involves removing mailboxes, pushing them back to have both sides then officially an ability to have connectivity on the east and west side, then to stripe it with our bike lane to our ability. Again, there's TAP grants, there's things that had to be eight-foot, 10-foot wide that I can't do with federal funds. So we took the best of what we could do, make it five feet wide compared to one which school could be walking down there. Of course, Councilman Toy wants a deer trail, it sounds like, to her house. But ultimately, the goal would be, the final connectivity would then look at, you know, putting a bike or, you know, a used chair path, how we can do it to sign it from, from the senior center or the rec center up to Six Mile. But again, there's a lot of involvement, cause on the portion on the west side that we had thought about doing, we have to enclose the ditches and some portions, we have to remove some trees unfortunately to widen that shoulder. And again, it's gonna be more difficult from Buchanan entrance going south because you have the mailboxes and, and those have to be pushed back and then go within our existing right-of-way to facilitate the final push for that, that shoulder and then hopefully stripe it like we did on Stark Road. The other thing would be to work with DPW to go out and do an early pickup on the leaves for them to make sure that's clear, so that way people can enjoy it at some point in time. But again, I don't, I can only, you know, make this suggestion, but that would be a good idea to make some additional runs along Stark Road and along Hubbard Road to help those leaves, so that way you feel safe, secure, so when you're running that, you know, it does act as an area for leaves and instead of their lawns, but that would be another suggestion.
Yeah, and like I said, Todd, I give you, it's, it's an improvement. It's a drastic improvement, but at the same time, I would love to see if we could stripe it in a way that clearly designated it when the time comes.
The goal would, you know, ultimately, if perfect world, we had all the money, we'd do both of them. I'd make it eight-foot wide, but I have to, you know, again, it would be, it would be nice to have a bike path and a running path, but five feet, we, the city council made the decision, are we gonna make it all a bike path? And nobody can run on it, or are we gonna, you're sure used path, or what's the best use of both sides to get to and from Rotary to the city center?
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Well, we also need a path to Handy Dip as well. Do we have a motion? Counsel? Is that, that is on regular?
Yeah, I guess we better do that.
It's a big dollar number, we'll leave it on regular. Anything further from council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, we are going to move on to number eight, which is a request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors for construction engineering services for the 2024 asphalt road program. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, since you just approved the contract for Nagel Paving, we wanna make sure that we have our CE, construction engineering portion with there, in which we do our testing, inspection, and make sure that things are to our specifications. So we're asking for your approval to have OHM Advisors, as they have done in the past, provide that service force in the amount of $508,703, again, based on the QBS Exhibit A, based on the contract amount. If you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, that will conclude our study agenda. I'm gonna go back to council. Any comments? Anything from the audience? Any parting comments? I would like to point out, we do have a visitor in the very back studying our council meetings. She's in class right now. And we wanna thank you for joining us for this incredible couple hours. And if you have questions, all of us would be happy to help you. I am going to safely adjourn this meeting showing six at 9:09. Good night, Livonia.